The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Devotee. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Present.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Here.
Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Present.
Alderman Con. Alderman Devotee. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Eight present, you have corn.
A corn being present, we will be led in opening reflection by Mid-America Clean Future Alliance Director Jenny Went in recognition of Plastic-Free July.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Went. I am the Executive Director of Mid-America Clean Future Alliance. We are a nonprofit focused on confronting the growing challenge of plastic pollution throughout the middle of the country, especially in communities along the Mississippi River. Oops, sorry. I also represent the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Plastic Pollution Initiative and Clean Water Program. MRCTI is an association of one hundred and five mayors along the Mississippi River from the headwaters in Bemidji, Minnesota to the Gulf of Mexico. I'm sorry, Gulf of America. The Mississippi River drains forty percent of the continental U.S. A plastic bottle that hits the ground in Montana can easily travel through storm drains and tributaries to the Mississippi River, to the Gulf, and to the ocean. It may not look like a plastic bottle when it gets there, but it's still there. At Mid-America Clean Future, we have a clear goal to support communities developing practical, sustainable, and scalable solutions to reduce plastic pollution and build healthier environments for people who live in these communities. We don't have time to waste. Plastic pollution is no longer just a nuisance or an eyesore. It's a direct and current threat to our health, our ecosystems, and our economy. Microplastics are now found in our drinking water, our food, and even our lungs. Many plastics contain endocrine-disrupting chemicals which can interfere with bodies' hormone systems and potentially lead to various health issues. For example, phthalates that are up in a plastic beverage bottle specifically mimic estrogen in our bodies contributing to reproductive issues. For a city like St. Louis where the Mississippi and its tributaries run through the community, that's not a distant problem. Something found in the oceans or on islands, beaches far away, it's right here. Municipal governments are on the front lines with the crisis. But as you know very well, recycling programs are expensive for those communities who can afford those programs, and the cost of cleanup, infrastructure, and public education always falls squarely on local budgets that are already stretched thin. This is one of the reasons we are working to connect local communities with resources currently available from various organizations but often disconnected from the real work happening in neighborhoods and cities. We're also looking to the future and preparing for eventual and/or federal extended producer responsibility, or EPR. EPR will shift costs from managing waste to where it belongs, to the companies that make and profit from the products they sell. We're not here to point fingers. We're here to build partnerships. We believe that solutions must come from the ground up and must originate at the community level through engagement and outreach and actual science and engineering that supports those solutions, and that cities like St. Louis are essential in leading. We're asking for your support in shaping smart local strategies and advocating for state and federal policies that ensure producers share the responsibility. We'd welcome this opportunity to work with city departments, local leaders, and community groups to take this on together. Thank you again for your time and certainly for your ongoing service to the people of St. Louis. I'm happy to connect with any of you and who would like to learn a little bit more. Thanks.
We will dispense with line item four. Any introduction of honored guests, Alderman?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the- I would like to request a brief moment of silence for firefighter Lee Cross. He was a firefighter since nineteen ninety-eight, and he suffered a line-of-duty death July first, twenty twenty-five. There will be funeral arrangements forthcoming, but I would, at the moment, request a moment of silence.
Everyone could please stand and bow your heads for a moment of silence. Any introduction of honored guests, Alderman from the fourteenth?
Thank you, Madam President and members of the Board of Aldermen. I would like to introduce our future colleague and officially my new downtown partner now that the seat will soon be filled. I would like to introduce the newly Alderwoman-elect but elected last night, Ms. Jamie Cox-Antuit, who will be joining us very soon down at the board. She's in the chamber on the right side, so please make her feel welcome, everybody. Congratulations, Jamie.
A further introduction of honored guests, Alderwoman from the twelfth?
Yes, Madam President, members of the board. I don't remember if we did this last week. If we did, I did not remember it. Did we have a moment of silence for Captain Brown of the Fifth District who passed away suddenly, like a week ago? His services was this Saturday?
I do not believe that we did, so if you would like to request that now.
I would. He just became the Fifth District Captain after the second ward stole Christie Marx from us. That's what I'm saying, Alderman from the second. But he's been a great captain, and we were just all shocked to get the notice. I called him, left a message, and then I went to the front desk, and they said, Alderwoman, he passed away a couple of days ago. So he was really getting in there and really starting to work hard. And I'm just really sad about that and asked the board for a moment of silence.
Could please stand and bow our heads for a moment of silence? Any further introduction of honored guests? Any further introduction of honored guests? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the tenth, you're recognized on the approval of the minutes from Friday, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we approve the minutes from Friday, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, that we approve the minutes from Friday, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, C, and D of the agenda and has been placed in the Google Drive for your review.
Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Seeing none, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill Forty-nine, number not used this session. Board Bill Fifty, sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above-surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in twenty-foot-wide north-south alley in City Block seven zero six as bounded by Carroll Street, Cascoalco Street, Lafayette Street, Second Street in the city of St. Louis, Missouri as herein after described in accordance with the Charter authority and in conformity with Section one-four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill Fifty-one, sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer pursuant to ordinance number seven zero three-three-three as amended by ordinance number seven one three nine four and ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic in the first ward. That's the extent of the first reading of board bills.
Reference to Committee of Board Bills.
To the Public Infrastructure Utility Committee, Board Bills Fifty and Fifty-One. That's the extent of reference to Committee of Board Bills.
Second reading, report of standing committees.
The following board bills were reported out of HUD's committee with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill Eighteen, sponsored by Alderwoman Velazquez, President Green, Alderwoman Sanyay, Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman Keys, and Alderman Aldridge. An ordinance amending ordinance number seven one eight three five to codify interior requirements for residential rentals by striking all mentions of Exhibit A and inserting a new section named Interior of Buildings that replicates the contents of Exhibit A and provides additional specifications related to occupancy load. Board Bill Forty-four, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, President Green, Alderwoman Velazquez, Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Sanyay, Alderwoman Keys, and Alderman Aldridge. An ordinance directing the Neighborhood Stabilization Division to establish a registration process and registration database for registered neighborhood organizations in the city of St. Louis and establishing eligibility criteria for neighborhood organization applicants including a severability clause. Board Bill Forty-five, as amended in committee, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, President Green, Alderwoman Velazquez, Alderwoman Sanyay, Alderwoman Keys, and Alderman Aldridge. An ordinance requiring notices to be sent to relevant registered neighborhood organizations and authorizing additional communication with registered neighborhood organizations containing a severability clause. Board Bill Forty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Switzer, Alderman Con, Alderwoman Sanyay, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Keys, and Alderman Aldridge. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen and Apportement authorizing the city of St. Louis to execute and accept as sub-award for the Bloomberg Philanthropies American Sustainability Cities Initiative in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand from John Hopkins University appropriating such funds to planning an urban design agency authorizing expenditures of such funds to the extent received authorizing contracts, agreements, and other documents to expend such funds containing a severability clause. The following board bills were reported out of Transportation and Commerce with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill Twenty-five, committee sub as amended in committee, sponsored by Alderman Con and President Green. An ordinance amending Title eighteen, Airports and Aviation Code of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis to add a new chapter pertaining to rental car operation at St. Louis Lambert International Airport containing a severability clause. Board Bill Forty, sponsored by Alderman Con, and ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease agreement between the city of St. Louis, Missouri and the city of St. Louis Port Authority for certain real property being the improvement worth of the purpose of maintaining, beautifying, improving the premises operating a controlled system of paid parking for a period of twenty-five years as set forth in a lease agreement attached here to as Exhibit A containing a severability clause. That's the extent of second reading, report of standing committees.
Madam Clerk, if you could please add me as a cosponsor to Board Bill Forty-seven.
Forty-seven?
Yes.
So noted.
Report of standing committees.
We have none.
Board Bills for Perfection Consent, and there has been a request from the Alderwoman from the eleventh if we could these place Board Bill Thirty-four as amended in committee on the informal calendar.
So noted.
Board Bills for Perfection Consent.
Board Bill Fifteen, sponsored by Alderman Aldridge pursuant to ordinance number seven zero three-three-three as amended by ordinance number seven one three nine four the Director of Streets to hereby direct to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on certain blocks in the fourteenth ward. Board Bill Thirty-two, sponsored by Alderman Devotee pursuant to ordinance number seven zero three-three-three as amended by ordinance number seven one three nine four and ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on various blocks in the fifth ward. Board Bill Thirty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Browning, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service authorizing the twenty-twenty-five St. Louis Works and the Fifty-Fifty Sidewalk Program citywide providing for the reconstruction of gutters, streets, driveways, spot curbs, sidewalks, alleys, traffic controls, beautification, tree planting, res servicing, and related engineering adjustment listed herein appropriating five-point-six million dollars from the Street Improvement Fund containing sections for description of work, approval of plans and specifications, work and material guarantee, estimated cost from city funds, supplemental agreements and reversions, authorizations, applicable state and federal wage rate requirements, equal opportunity provisions, the mayor's executive order, contract advertisement statutes, and a public work emergency clause. Board Bill Seventeen, sponsored by Alderman Con, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Estmen and Apportement authorizing and directing the comptroller and the mayor with the recommendation of the Director of Airports to accept, enter, and to execute on behalf of the city grant agreements offered by the state of Missouri for the furtherance of programs and operations at St. Louis Lambert International Airport containing a severability clause. Board Bill Thirty-five, sponsored by Alderman Con, President Green, and Alderwoman Switzer. An ordinance appropriating the sum of twenty-six million, three-hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars as described in Section nine four point six zero zero through nine four point six five five revised statutes of Missouri two thousand as amended by a period of July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, which sum is hereby appropriated out of the Transportation Trust Fund to the by-state development agency for transportation purposes containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill Thirty-six, sponsored by Alderman Con, President Green, and Alderwoman Switzer. An ordinance pertaining to the transit sales tax imposed pursuant to Section nine four point six six zero revised statutes of Missouri as adopted by the voters of the St. Louis City on August second, nineteen ninety-four pursuant to ordinance number six three one six eight, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund directing the Treasurer of the City of St. Louis to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account One appropriating thirteen million, six-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars from the said sales tax for a period of July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six to the by-state development agency for certain purposes containing a severability and emergency clause. Board Bill Thirty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Con, President Green, and Alderwoman Switzer. An ordinance pertaining to the Transit Sales Tax imposed pursuant to Section nine four point six six zero revised statutes of Missouri as adopted by the voters of St. Louis City on November fourth, nineteen ninety-seven pursuant to ordinance number six four one one one, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund directing the Treasurer of the City of St. Louis to deposit funds received pursuant to said I'm sorry, to said sales tax into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account Two appropriating thirteen million, six-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars from the said sales tax for a period of July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six to the by-state development agency for certain purposes containing a severability and an emergency clause. That's the extent of Board Bills for Perfection Consent Calendar.
Alderwoman from the tenth, you're recognized on the motion to adopt the Board Bills for the Perfection Consent Calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the Board Bills for Perfection Consent Calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the seventh, that we adopt the Board Bills for the Perfection Consent Calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Board Bills for Perfection.
Board Bill Nineteen, sponsored by Alderman Aldridge. An ordinance approving the petition of an owner of certain real property to establish the Community Improvement District, establishing the Jefferson Arms Community Improvement District, finding a public purpose for the establishment of the Jefferson Arms Community Improvement District, authorizing the execution of a transportation project agreement between the city and Jefferson Arms Transportation Development District, prescribing the form and details of said agreement, making certain findings with respect thereto, authorizing other related actions in connection with the TDD project containing an emergency and a severability clause.
Alderman from the fourteenth, you're recognized on the perfection of Board Bill Ninete-
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to perfect Board Bill Nineteen.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the fourteenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the eleventh, that we perfect Board Bill Nineteen. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Board Bill Nineteen is creating a new CID and TDD for the Jefferson Arms Building, which some of the funds that would be collected from the I believe the TDD, as a TIF, ends up paying off, will be able to continue to pay for necessary infrastructure improvements that is needed on the building. I'm really excited about this project. I'm really excited about this project. I've had the opportunity to tour it twice, one time with you, Madam President. This is one of those eyesores in downtown that has been vacant for a very long time. Hopefully not to this one, the millennial will be another eyesore that this Board of Aldermen address, but the Jefferson Arms Building is finally almost at a level of completion. We're looking to, the developers looking to hopefully open up, I want to say in the next few weeks, if not the next few months, the CED will be potentially up to a 20-year CED, but it doesn't have to go up to 20 years as well as the board makeup would have three representatives from the CED as well as two from the City of St. Louis that would eventually have to get proved through this board. But again, the CED and the TDD that hopefully being implemented today would be able to help with future construction needs as well as infrastructure needs around the Jefferson Arms Building. With that, I will open up for any questions on Board Bill 19.
Alderwoman from the 12th.
Madam President, members of the board, if the Alderman from the 14th would yield?
The Alderman from the 14th yields questioning from the Alderwoman from the 12th.
Yes, I will.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Alderman. I know what a CED is, and I also understand the Jefferson Arms might need one. I guess I'm trying to ask the question of why is it the Jefferson Arms Transportation Development District? Can you explain that to me?
Yes, ma'am. So in the committee, what they said as a TIF starts to, I think expires very soon, the TDD would be able to pay additional funds that the TIF was collecting. So outside of the CED, they, and they don't plan to keep the TDD forever. Eventually, I think they're supposed to expire out, but to bring in additional funds that the TIF was bringing.
But I'm, so I guess my question, I didn't ask it well enough. Does it have anything to do with transportation? Or is some funds going to come from some transportation set of funds? Or is it just called that?
Say that last part again, Alder lady.
Um, does the Jefferson Arms Transportation Development District, are they going to be receiving any funds from, some funds from transportation?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, so I was just trying to, I, I, I could see it being the Jefferson Arms Development District, but I didn't understand why the transportation was in there. That's what I'm not understanding, trying to understand.
Yes, ma'am. So again, the, so what the TDD would do is to be able to help pay for, not necessarily transportation directly, but it would go to like the streets around the Jefferson Arms as well as the sidewalk around the building, which is considered like transportation and infrastructure.
Okay, so what would be the difference if you didn't have transportation? Let me ask it a different way. So if you just called it the Jefferson Arms Development District, which we have, have been having a community improvement districts, not since before I came down there, but we actually created it since I've been at the Board of Aldermen. So what would be the difference if you didn't have the, a transportation development district and you just had the Jefferson Arms Development District? With, is there a difference?
I think what they, I think what they tried to do is, one, use the transportation district to pay for kind of the infrastructure of around the area. And like you say, they could have went through a different route of just having a district, but they did the TDD for the transportation, the infrastructure around the building, which I know eventually that's something they want to phase off and then have the CED be more of a long-term income for as well as infrastructure around the location.
And how long would the transportation district be in effect? Or do they anticipate the transportation district being in effect?
It is, they said in committee, it's a certain number once they get up to that amount that is expected to disperse the transportation district.
So it's a financial amount that they could spend and then it no longer is in effect?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Aldermen from the 14th, you are recognized to close.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I close on Board Bill 19.
It's been moved by the Aldermen from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 11th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 19. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Devote. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Devote. 13 aye votes and one no vote.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of the Aldermen from the 14th to perfect Board Bill Number 19.
That's the extent of Board Bills for Perfection.
Report of engrossment.
Board Bill 4, 16, 26, 27, 30 as amended on the floor.
Third read and final passage of Board Bills consent.
Board Bill 4, 16, 26, 27, and 30 as amended on the floor.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you're recognized on the motion to adopt the third read and final passage of Board Bills on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the third read, final passage of Board Bills on the consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Aldermen from the 3rd, that we adopt the third final passage of Board Bills on the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Got it. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Devote. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Devote. 13 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the 10th to third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading and final passage of Board Bills.
We have none.
Report of the finally passed and signed by the president.
Board Bill 4, 16, 26, 27, 30 as amended on the floor.
All other business being suspended, the president shall at open session affix her signature here to end that these.
Madam President, it's, it's a correction on Board Bill 19. That was 12 aye votes and one no vote.
Okay, thank you. Aldermen from the 9th, you're recognized on the motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of introduce Resolution 50 for first reading resolutions.
Thank you. I move that we suspend the rules to introduce Resolution Number 50.
It's been moved by the Aldermen from the 9th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 6th, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Resolution 50. Aldermen, you may proceed.
Uh, thank you. I ask unanimous consent?
Uh, sorry, we still have to vote. If you just want to quickly explain what we're.
Oh, sure. Getting ahead of myself. So this is a resolution to accept the East West Gateway Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is something that unfortunately needs to be passed by tomorrow. We did receive it the last minute. There should be an email in your inbox from the mayor's office explaining what this is and what this does, but essentially it helps us deal with anti-flooding measures in the city. And so we want to be eligible to receive these funds from FEMA, and that's what this is necessary for.
It's been moved by the Aldermen from the 9th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 6th, that we suspend the rules for the purpose of introducing Resolution 50. This is a non-debatable motion. Madam Clerk.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. I didn't hear you, Alderman.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderman Orion. Alderman Devote. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier.
Aye.
Alderman Browning.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Ald, Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman, Alderman Devote. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
13 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Aldermen from the 9th. Madam Clerk, if you could please place Resolution 50 at the end of the first reading resolution.
So noted.
First reading resolutions in reference to committees.
Resolution 50 sponsored by Alderman Browning and President Green, a resolution adopting the 2025 through 2030 East West Gateway St. Louis Regional Hazardous Mitigation Plan.
Aldermen from the 9th, you are recognized on the first reading of Resolution 50.
Thank you. I ask unanimous consent.
Hearing no objection, you may proceed.
Uh, so as we discussed, this is from East West Gateway. This is accepting their hazard mitigation plan. Uh, it's a really good thing for our city and happy to take any questions. And there's also an informational spreadsheet in your inbox. With that, I move that we pass Resolution Number 50.
Adopt.
Adopt Resolution Number 50.
It's been moved by the Aldermen from the 9th, seconded by the Aldermen from the 14th, that we adopt Resolution Number 50. Is there any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 10th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. May I please be added as a cosponsor to Resolution 50?
Uh, Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Please also make sure I'm a cosponsor as well. Uh, Alderwoman from the 12th.
Madam President, and members of the board, if the Alderman from the 10th would yield? I'm sorry, 9th.
The Alderman from the 9th yields questioning from the Alderwoman from the 12th?
Yes.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Um, so I don't see the informational guideline I'm looking for, but could you, since you're just introducing this from the floor, could you go over somewhat what the plan is, the mitigation plan, a short synopsis if you have it?
Yes, so just taking this from the information that we received this morning, the plan sets forth regional goals for between 2025 and 2030. There are three goals. The first is to prepare communities in advance of a natural disaster to prevent loss of life, minimize injury and illness, and reduce long-term vulnerabilities from eligible high-hazard potential dams. The second one is to preserve and maintain property, including public and private infrastructure, business, and individual homes, and improve community vitality. And the third goal is to encourage regional, county, and local planning and development that reduces future risk from natural disasters and is consistent with the Hazard Mitigation Plan. So this is a plan that is required by FEMA in order to receive funds to address these. Uh, it, it is done through East West Gateway. They sent us this resolution. This is something that we have to formally adopt.
Okay, um, so I looked through handouts or whatever, so I don't see it attached to anything. I don't have anything that I'm morally opposed to because I want mitigation for sure. So I'm going to vote for this, which is against usually what I would do because I like to have things that are, I'm asking to be, to, to cast my vote on be in front of me. So I would ask the staff in the future to put such handouts in, I think we have something that says handouts or something like that, and it doesn't seem to be in there.
If you look, and I, I can see it was sent to you about an hour, 9:32 a.m. from Casey Milberg in the mayor's office. And again, Alderwoman, I, I do apologize, yeah, by email. And I do apologize for the last minute.
But it should be someplace on our, in our agenda, like handouts or something like that. That's what I'm saying. I looked in written comments and in handouts, and when they send that, they should also send it to the clerk's office so that we can assess it from the drive. So that's not your fault. That's just a comment. I am going to support it. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 11th.
I'd like to move that we embank this.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 11th, seconded by the Aldermen from the 14th, that we embank Resolution 50. Is there any discussion on the embank? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 50 is now embank. Is there any further discussion on Resolution 50? Seeing none, Aldermen from the 9th, you are recognized to close.
I have no further comment. Thank you for my colleague's support. I renew my motion to pass Resolution or adopt Resolution Number 50.
It's been moved by the Aldermen from the 9th, seconded by the Aldermen from the 14th, that we adopt Resolution Number 50. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
That's the extent of first reading of resolutions in reference to committee.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the Courtesy Resolutions Consent Calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Aldermen from the 14th, that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar. Is there any discussion? Alderwoman from the 1st.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we make Resolution 44 embank.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 1st, seconded by the Aldermen from the 3rd, that we make Resolution Number 44 embank. Is there any discussion on the motion to embank? Alderwoman from the 12th, was your hand up for the motion to embank or for something else?
I was going to ask for, that my name be included, so I don't need to, I'm lowering my hand now.
All right. It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 1st, seconded by the Aldermen from the 3rd, that we embank Resolution Number 44. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 44 is now embank. Is there any further discussion on the Courtesy Resolution Calendar? Seeing none, it's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Aldermen from the 14th, we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Tuesday, July 8th, 2025, full board meeting in the chambers at 10 a.m. Thursday, July 10th, 2025, Health and Human Development have a webinar at 9 a.m. Personnel will meet in the Kennedy Room at 11 a.m. Friday, July 11th, 2025, Legislation and Rules will have a meeting in the Kennedy Room at 9 a.m. Full board meeting in the chambers, July, I'm sorry, full board meeting in the chambers at 10 a.m. That's the extent of the announcement.
Uh, Madam Clerk, Personnel Committee has had to be rescheduled and will not be meeting at 11 a.m.
So noted.
Any further announcements? Aldermen from the 4th.
Thank, thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Public Safety will meet at 2 p.m. on July 10th in the Kennedy Room to take up Board Bill 33.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to excuse.
I'm sorry. Madam President, members of the board, I'm trying to negotiate the time. For HUSS, we do need to hold a HUSS meeting on Monday at 10 o'clock. I apologize, you know, as we're working together collaboratively for these bills for our constituents on behalf of the relief we want to make sure that we accommodate. Madam President, members of the board, I want to schedule a HUSS committee meeting for Monday at 2 p.m. Thank you.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we excuse the Alderman from the 5th for necessary absence.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th. the seventh that we excuse the older person from the fifth for necessary absence. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I move that we adjourn until Tuesday, July eighth, twenty twenty-five, in the Board of Aldermen Chambers at ten AM.
Been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Aldermen from the third that we adjourn until Tuesday, July eighth, twenty twenty-five, in the Board of Aldermen Chambers at ten AM. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. We are adjourned.